Are reporting Secretary Robin Vaccaro. And, um, oh, it's Mrs. Haskell.
She's coming in, Mr. Crook.
Uh, Mrs., uh, Elizabeth Haskell will be joining us momentarily. So.
I'd like to call the meeting to all of the Somerset School Committee at six thirty-five. The conference is having their post-it. Let's record a show that this meeting is being electronically recorded if anyone in the audience. Also, we should still try and record this meeting. You should notify the committee at the time. Any such recording may be subject to reasonable restrictions imposed by the chair with the extent permitted under the open meeting law. Roll call members. Ms. Mchara.
Here.
Mr. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Crook.
Here.
Raffa.
Here.
Chair is here as well. We have administration president, Director of Business and Finance, Mrs. Albinaz, Director of Credit, Miss Elizabeth Haskell, Director of Technology, Mr. Stephen LeVette. Is he still here? Nope, he's not here, sorry. Mr. Campbell. And our first order of business is pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to mention that our superintendent of schools, Jeffrey Schoonover, is not with us this evening. He is ill and is unable to attend. The first item that we have on the agenda is to enter into executive session. I will entertain a motion pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the committee, and the chair so declares. The purpose is to discuss a level-three grievance on behalf of the nurses covered by the collective bargaining agreement between the Somerset Teachers Association and the Somerset and Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committees. In addition, uh, the executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Section... Thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to bargaining with, uh... With the Somerset Teachers Association, um, because an open meeting might have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position, and the chair so declares. In addition, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to discuss strategy with respect to non-union personnel and to, uh, discuss bargaining with non-union personnel, specifically non-aligned employees, crossing guards, playground and recess supervisors, part-time daily substitute cafeteria workers and substitutes, clerical paraprofessional teachers who work a minimum, who have a minimum two-year degree or equivalent, or a four-year degree, and no teaching certificate, and four-year substitutes, uh, substitutes with a four-year degree and a certified, uh, certified teachers. Because an open session would have a detrimental effect on the committee's bargaining position, and the chair so declares. May I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Gagliardi. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, roll call, Mrs. Field.
Aye.
Mrs. Gagliardi.
Aye.
Mr. Larabee.
Aye.
Mr. Barry Giliducci.
Aye.
Mrs. Rothwell.
Aye.
Mr. Patel.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Somerset K also needs to launch an executive session pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. Discussion of level-three grievance on behalf of the nurses covered by the collective bargaining agreement between, um, the Somerset Teachers Association and the Somerset and Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committees. Also pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, Somerset Teachers Association. In pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to discuss strategy with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining in non-union personnel, non-aligned employees, crossing guards, playground, and recess supervisors, part-time daily substitute cafeteria workers and substitutes, clerical, paraprofessional, and teachers with a minimum two-year degree or equivalent, four-year degree, no teaching certificate, and four-year degree certified teachers. I have a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Sorry.
Motion made by Mr. Crook, seconded by Mr. Patel, by roll call vote. Mr. Mchara.
Aye.
Mrs. Raffa. Aye. Mr. Patel.
Aye.
Mr. Crook.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye as well. You will be returning to open session.
Yes, the regional school committee will be returning to open session. I estimate that our executive session will be fifteen to thirty minutes. Uh, we're still in a joint meeting with the Somerset, um, paid school committee. And the first item on the agenda is to consider pay raises for non-aligned employees, specifically crossing guards, playground, and recess supervisors, part-time daily substitute cafeteria workers, and their substitutes, clerical, paraprofessional, and teachers, uh, who are substitutes in various categories. Mrs. Albinaz, can I just very briefly?
Yeah, sorry. Okay, um, so there's four, like Mr. Pierce said, there's four categories. Uh, the crossing guards, we are looking to increase their hourly rate to thirteen dollars per hour. This group, there's two crossing guards, one at the high school, one at the elementary. We're looking to, um, they increased their rate to thirteen dollars an hour. They have not seen a pay increase in at least the past seven years, so we're looking to rectify that. Playground and cafeteria supervisors, we have them at the elementary level. Uh, the old rates were fourteen twenty-five, uh, for cafeteria supervisor, and then an additional, um, eleven dollars an hour for playground and recess coverage. We're looking to pay them a flat rate of forty dollars per day for both of these services. Um, the new rates for minimum, oh, I'm sorry, new rates for substitutes based on minimum wage increases. While municipalities are exempt from minimum wage requirements, uh, we do feel that the school districts have to remain competitive to get substitutes in for a variety of positions, mainly clerical, paraprofessional, and teachers. So in keeping with the minimum wage increase, we're looking to increase the clerical substitute to twelve dollars an hour, substitute paraprofessional to seventy dollars per day, substitute teacher with a minimum two-year degree or equivalent, eighty-four dollars per day, substitute teacher, four-year degree, but no teaching certificate, eighty-seven dollars per day, and substitute teacher with a certified teaching certificate, um, certified teacher, ninety-seven dollars per day. And then the fourth category is our part-time cafeteria staff. These are our non-union cafeteria workers who are permanent part-timers, or they are just substitutes that come in and cover, they bounce around for people that are out because of sick, sickness, or, um, commitments. Uh, so we are looking to increase their hourly rate to co-align with, um, the minimum wage to twelve dollars per hour.
Mrs. Albinaz, can you just give a little breakdown for everyone that this is going to be super costly to...
Sure.
To pay or is it really kind of just, you know?
So the crossing guards, we've, uh, calculated to be about, um, two hundred dollars per district for the entire school year, so, um, we're gonna recognize half of that for the school year if we change the rates mid-year. The playground and cafeteria supervisors, it's going to cost the K eight budget approximately, um, a little bit over two thousand dollars for all eight of our supervisors. If we had, we just did, I just did a cost out for the teachers. If it's a teacher sub, seven dollars a day, we're looking at about, um, twelve, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the year to increase, um, one teacher sub, seven dollars per day. And then I have not costed out the part-time cafeteria staff at this time.
I, I would just add, it, much of this is, um, is, um, focused on the fact that the minimum wage increased as of January first to twelve dollars an hour, and most of these rates are right at or slightly above the minimum wage. And perhaps the most significant cost is to substitute teachers, but the fact is, we sometimes have difficulty, uh, obtaining substitute teachers because of the rate. And, um, I would point out that with the increase, the substitute rate for a certified teacher, uh, at ninety-seven dollars a day is around fifteen dollars an hour, which is, uh, part of the reason why we have difficulty, uh, getting substitute teachers. And the fact is that if we're not able to, uh, obtain a substitute teacher, it sometimes becomes necessary for students to be in a study, which, uh, from my perspective, is not, it is not a positive thing. We need to have them, if a teacher is sick, we need to have someone who can come in and follow their ed plan or their lesson plan for the day. So, uh, I think this is, uh, an issue that, uh, relates to the quality of the, the education we're providing for our students, and it's pretty important. So I'll entertain a motion to approve these, uh, increases to the extent they apply to the regional school district.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi, seconded by Mrs. Field. Any further discussion? In the absence of further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
For the K eight, I'd like to make a motion for the pay rates for non-aligned employees, crossing guards, playground, and recess supervisors, part-time daily substitute cafeteria workers and substitutes, clerical, paraprofessional, teachers, minimum two-year degree or equivalent, four-year degree, no teaching certificate, and four-year degree certified teacher, as discussed in detail by Mrs. Albinaz.
So moved.
Second. We have the, the, by Mr. Crook and seconded by Mr. Was that Elizabeth Raffa? It's fine, we can go with Mr. Patel. Mr. Patel, um, all in favor? Sorry, sorry.
I just want to mention, obviously, what everyone else says is really just because of the minimum wage increase, but it's also gonna be, we're gonna be addressing this for the next few years because I believe, by twenty twenty-three, minimum wage is going up to fifteen dollars an hour. So it's just something that, uh, when we're working on, when our, we're working on our budgets, we may wanna keep that in mind, that these, uh, minimum wages are going up.
Good point. Mr. Patel, thank you. Um, any other further discussion? About further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? As we see it.
The next item we have on the agenda for our joint meeting is a discussion and vote on transportation request for proposals. This was added to the agenda, um, today because, um, these issues were, uh, arose, I understand, at a bidder's conference that was held yesterday?
Today.
Today. So, Mrs. Albinaz?
So, uh, in front of you, you have the original transportation RFP that was issued in December. Today, we had a pre-bid conference at one o'clock in central office. Um, Mrs. Haskell was there to take notes for me, which was very helpful. Uh, we had two vendors attend the pre-bid conference, conference, the meeting, uh, just to go through qualifications and questions on the bid. So, um, as a result of that, and I do apologize for the last-minute, um, request for changes, but if we want to amend this RFP, we need to do it pretty quickly. I have reprinted the bid, adding some sections in red that I think we probably need to revise based on feedback from both vendors and just some questions that were asked today. Um, the major ones relate to, uh, page three, section one point seven. Uh, we had eliminated additional compensation, uh, for early release days, and originally it was a fifth proposal on our prior contracts. It was one of those things that, if you take a step back and you think about a contracted vendor and a driver that, let's say, the high school gets out early, but middle school and elementary school get out at their regular time, you're having a driver that's coming back in the middle of the day, then going back home, and then coming back to do middle school and high, and elementary school. There is an added labor cost for that. Um, I would propose, instead of them adding that labor cost over the, the daily bus rate that they're going to be proposing, we add back the early-release day proposal, um, that was on our old contracts. Originally, that cost is about, um, I wanna say it's twenty-five hundred per district, but it's separate from a daily rate. It is very clear what the billing should be for those days, and they do happen infrequently throughout the school year, but they do happen. Um, and rather than spreading, or potentially spreading the cost of that onto a daily bus rate, I'm just, I'm recommending it, it's your decision tonight if you want to amend it or not, but I just wanted to bring that information forward.
And Lindsay, that would allow for transparency also, if we add it back in, and that's how it's going to be built going forward, that's gonna add transparency so that we can compare apples to apples over a year, uh, on, on those various costs.
For that expense, yes.
For that expense, okay.
Okay.
So how, do you think we should handle these one by one?
Sure.
All right. Is there, uh, any discussion on this particular issue? I would be inclined to accept our, the recommendation of our Director of Business and Finance.
Would you want a motion for each change?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
The change on page three.
The change on page three.
Is there a second? Motion made by Mrs. Gagliardi and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
If that's the case, we need to start on page two because there is a change.
I was gonna go back to that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the change on, um, item one point seven as presented.
And the motion we have seconded.
So moved, second.
Motion by Mrs. Mchara, seconded by Mr. Patel. Any favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, sorry? Any further discussion? Any favor?
Aye.
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 Uh, so, uh, Mrs. Albinaz, why'd you skip over one point four?
Well, I had said the major changes, so I didn't know we were voting individually on all of them. I wouldn't skip that otherwise.
Okay, well, is that just a, you feel that's superfluous? Is that what it is?
Contracted bus, uh, companies aren't required to follow prevailing wage, so I just wanted to change it so that it is at least following Department of Labor standards, so it's minimum wage at least.
All right, so, why don't we go over that?
Okay.
What other, what other significant changes do you?
Uh, in my opinion, the significant change is page five, the security cameras. We're proposing that we are funding the cost of having each bus have a security camera, or multiple security cameras located on the buses. Um, it is my opinion that the district should be covering that cost. I don't think it's necessary for the bus drivers to absorb the cost of these cameras at this point. I honestly think that it would be financially better for us to pick that cost up and to actually see, um, what that cost would be. So that is the change, uh, in the first paragraph, the second, I'm sorry, the third paragraph is, you have to be specific with video recording and audio recording. So you want, if we want audio recordings, which I believe that we would also want, not just video, then we have to be specific in the bid for that because it would, you know, dictate, um, responsibility, so.
Doesn't, doesn't that create a, a problem, though? We own the cameras, they're on the vendor's bus, who maintains them? Who services them? Who, uh, uh, who's gonna store the data that's on the camera? How is that gonna work?
So those are all things that we would, we would handle. We would require the district to do the, the storage uploads for us so that we can ensure that we have them daily uploaded. Um, but as far as the maintenance of them, um, I do think it's something that we should take on as far as the cost, an annual contract for maintenance of cameras. I do think it's something that the district should, should cover as part of our tech plan.
Is this new? Have, have we, is this new to this bid process?
Yes, we haven't had cameras.
And this is a request coming from, I don't know if we've talked about this at the district level. Have we about cameras on buses, or is this?
It was discussed when we were talking about the bid.
Okay.
We wanted to add security cameras when we were working on this, on this bid.
Have we costed out with the impact of the district's over?
I will be including that in, uh, the budget when it's, when it's known, yes.
If, if we assume that responsibility... Clearly, it's a budget item for us if, uh, if it's, if the vendor, I, I, I guess what I'm thinking about is how does that impact on regional transportation reimbursement?
It doesn't impact it. We can have the, the contractor be responsible for maintenance. That's absolutely on the table as well, if it's, if that's the district, the way the districts wanna go.
But if we own it, then it would be odd for us to have them maintain it, correct?
If we purchase it, we own it, yes. I'm just looking to get a better cost per bus per day, and this could skew that if we include it as a daily bus rate. Again, it's your choice, we don't have to. We can have the cost of the cameras, um, as part of the daily bus rate that's proposed.
Can we get alternate, an alternate bid?
We can, I can...
And without?
I can include that. We can amend it. There'll be two different proposals.
And then we can kinda...
Sure.
Is there hesitation with us taking ownership and maintenance?
There, we have, we have enough, we have enough, uh, things we have to do, uh, that the idea of us co, having to coordinate with Fisher Bus as to, they'll have to tell us when a camera isn't functioning. We'll have to get our service person to their facility to service the camera. Uh, we gotta make sure that they're properly downloading what's on the camera to us. It just seems, uh, to me, complicated, really a complicated situation. If we, if we feel it's important to have cameras on our buses, then I think it makes sense to require the vendor to have them and maintain the system and, and do the downloads and make them available to us when we need them, rather than us doing it. I can, I understand Mrs. Albinaz's desire to try to bring the contract in as, you know, a reasonable price. I just, I would rather have the option of finding out what it would cost us to have a camera in each bus and then make, making the decision as to whether or not we wanna expend that money, have the, the vendor install them in all our buses, or some buses, or whatever.
I guess, so the reason I ask the question is, we have IT, capable IT resources within the districts that can probably handle, you know, some of those maintenance type issues. If the, the bus companies need to go out on contract, uh, where people would do that, I would think that would be an increased cost.
But I think it's sensible to have both in front of us.
I, I agree.
Now we can compare the draft. So I'll add, I'll add, um...
We, the other thing I would say is, I'm not, I'm not sure that we have a lot of, uh, extra time and staff in our IT department. We're pretty bare-boiled. I mean, if we talk to the IT department, whether, uh, whether they can assume this.
I'll have, um, two different options for bid responses.
Um, just to mention, sorry if I can interrupt for K eight. I'm not gonna go through each one for vote. If there is a member that feels something needs a vote, please just make a motion to vote so we can get through this.
Okay, so, page ten, just a, a small change to the certificate of insurance. We are looking to get the awarded bidder, um, to give us the certificate of insurance thirty days prior to the start of the contract versus twenty-one days after the award is made. Sometimes it is difficult to get insurance coverage that quickly, so, um, rather than have, we wanna just give them sufficient time. Um, both vendors that were there are more than capable of supplying current insurance documents for their existing companies that they work for, or school districts that they work for. Page eleven, time schedule, uh, forty-five minutes, um, in their professional opinion is really hard, so they suggested we change, um, the students to be on buses no longer than sixty minutes, which is, um, best practice for, for students.
Does it, does it conflict with what's on page fifteen, though? Seven point six.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I have to change seven point six as well, if we do move forward with that. I'm sorry, thank you for catching that. Okay, the last one, oh, there's actually two more. Um, page thirty-five, uh, in line with the early release days, I know that this was a change that was recommended, um, for late buses. So we originally, our old contract or our existing contract has a additional proposal for our late buses that service the middle school and the high school. It is above and beyond what the price per day for the buses per our contract. There is a flat amount that we pay per day for each of those buses. This round of, um, bid creation, we eliminated the extra proposal for that. We wanted to lump it in with our regular bus runs and whatever a price per day would be. Based on feedback, you know, it kinda makes sense to separate it again so that we're not spreading out an increased cost for the late buses, um, above and beyond what the regular bus cost would be. So that is, it, again, it's your decision, um, and then we did have, I just had an error in the times for late buses. It's three oh, three thirty-five, I'm sorry, four oh five for the middle school. The original bid, after I changed it, was three thirty-five, and the high school, uh, three thirty-five. Original bid was three oh five P M. So I just wanted to correct that.
I have a question.
Sure.
When we considered having these payment and out-fee for the late bus, wasn't it worth the significant savings?
Uh, for, I wanna say it was about eighteen thousand, around there, a little bit less than twenty.
So that would be taken out of that?
It could be, or they could just include it in their daily bus rate. Either way, they're gonna have to pay those drivers extra labor. So in my opinion, I would want it separated it out, separate it out so I can actually track that cost. But again, it's your decision.
Can I just ask a quick question? I was just with something that I asked to be changed. How many hour, when, this is the part where I'm, I'm questioning, um, added extra costs for labor. What is the average time a bus driver spends on the bus?
For the late buses?
No, like, I'm just talking, like, an average, 'cause like, I know we have, like, a bunch of tiers. I know we have more elementary than middle school, more middle school, you know, than high school. And I'm just, what I'm looking at is, we have at least, how many buses don't do all three?
We have three Berkeley buses that just do Berkeley, and we have four elementary buses that just do elementary. The other fourteen buses do all three.
The other fourteen do all three, but yet the other buses that we're paying is still charging us the same amount, even though the hours on the road may not be as much.
Correct.
So my question is, is why do we pay full price for certain buses that are on the road and using more gas, and then the buses that are not being utilized throughout the same portion of the time, we're paying? At, at that point, you know, one of the concerns that I hear from the community, and even myself, I see a bus with only six kids on it, or twelve kids, or whatever the case may be. But if I'm paying full price for nineteen buses or twenty-one buses, I would say, why would I not have, why would I extend the bus time from forty-five minutes to sixty minutes where I can use, might as well just utilize all nineteen buses that I'm paying full price? Christ, I'm paying for it, might as well let the high school have the buses anyhow because I'm already paying for it. So to me, it doesn't make any sense why I'm paying extra for buses that are on the road less time. So to me, it doesn't make any sense why I'm paying extra for buses that are on the road less time as the same time of all the rest of them. And yet, they want me to increase the amount of time of students being on the bus from forty-five minutes to sixty-five, to sixty minutes. So I'm having an issue with that.
Okay, you can decide if you don't want to move forward with that. I mean, it's really...
No, I, I actually, I would prefer them, they actually charge me for the buses that they actually are using in time. You know, I just don't see why I'm paying full price because if that is the case, I would like all nineteen buses, at least for the K eight and, I mean, at least for the high school, I mean, for the middle school and elementary. Why would I have a bus picking up kids earlier because they're gonna make more runs? I might as well, if I'm paying fifty thousand dollars a year for the bus, I might as well have them on the road a complete time like I have on there if they're gonna continue to charge me extra.
That's why I'm saying it's your choice. We can either roll the dice, add it as a separate proposal, or we can just have it included in the daily bus rate that they're going to be responding on. The one thing I will say though is that with the elimination, hopefully the elimination of double runs at elementary level, students will be dismissed at three fifteen. We may not have time to get late buses back to, um, the high school and middle school at that point. And they're all being used except the Berkeley buses that one currently does a late bus run. But that's it. All the other ones do not.
You know what? If we're going to do, if the late, if, if it's not possible and we need to cha- they have to charge us, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
But what I am saying is, I want all, how many, how many buses we have in the elementary?
Eighteen.
And how many do we have at the middle school?
Fourteen.
I would like all eighteen running the, uh, middle school and getting these students, instead of picking them up from their houses at seven oh five, I'd rather them being picked up at seven thirty because there are more buses on the road.
Okay.
And, and I, and I still don't feel comfortable, like, just so you know, I, I'm not approving the six. I, I can't support sixty minutes on the bus with a, with a, with a community that has seven square miles. There's no reason for a student to be on the bus for more than an hour or more than forty-five minutes if we have eighteen buses. Unless we're eliminating buses and the students are gonna be on the bus longer. If that, there's no purpose to increase it to sixty minutes.
What's the length of the longest Berkeley bus run?
It's closer, it's close to an hour. I mean, there's only three buses to do that in the community.
They're trying to protect themselves because I do believe there's bus runs coming from Berkeley that are already there.
All right, well, if, if the committee agrees to remove the late buses, I'm fine with it. But I would like to have all of our buses that we're paying for, the eighteen buses that help with the middle school and also the elementary. This way, we're not picking kids going to the elementary any earlier than it has to be.
Wouldn't that be part of the, the bid that comes in, like being able to negotiate those actual runs?
The cost of the run or the existing tier setup?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the price of the bus per day up to a free basis. Okay, um, and then that last one is page thirty-eight. Uh, there was some debate, um, about the in-district vans and, um, a cost per day for those. They were just both actually questioning if we needed a wheelchair van. Wheelchair vans are in, you know, theoretically, they're more expensive and you have to have, um, specialized training to run them, which I'm hoping, you know, their, their drivers would get. But it would be helpful to see if there's an additional cost to use a wheelchair for students. Currently, we, we only have a few wheelchair students that were paying for their transportation and not doing it in-house, but I think it's, it's worthwhile to see and get it in writing what that extra cost for a wheelchair van would be.
So all this does is we ask them to include what the cost would be for that?
Per day, the additional cost, yep.
Can I ask a question regarding one point one seven? Why was that originally placed, uh, because it says it's, you know, because of safety concerns, but now we're being asked to consider deleting it because of a, a driver shortage?
The, there's a national driver shortage where people cannot find bus drivers. A lot of those bus drivers may have small children that they need to take with them, um, for a portion of their bus runs. It's just the nature of the job. And I think that by restrict, and we do, our current vendors, you know, they follow that. Doesn't happen often, but to further, to not pour salt on the wound, it is easier to find a driver if for some reason they need to have their child on the bus with them at some portion of a bus run for childcare purposes.
I hate to say this, I can't, I can't agree to that because I, they should be there driving, not babysitting their child. We don't, so that's like...
Well, yeah, not only that, but, I mean, if it's an infant, is the, is the, is there a proper seating?
Yeah, they have...
I, I share Mr. Machado's concern about, about bringing children. I mean, I once saw someone, one of our employees with a child, uh, riding on a piece of equipment and I was, thought it was inappropriate. It's only one instance when I saw it. I don't think bringing the kids to school...
Okay, so we'll just, I'll take that out.
Something we need to include in the transportation contract.
But that, but that doesn't mean, like, if I'm a bus driver and my child happens to be on my route, that's okay. But then not driving throughout the whole, you know, I just want to make sure. I, you know, I don't want a five-year-old coming with a bus driver picking up high school kids and so on because of daycare issues.
I don't know if that actually exists right now, but I would assume that we would find out about it, yeah.
Please, for clarification, I'm sorry, I want just a little bit of confusion in regards to the late bus.
Sure.
With separating it out, is it cost-effective to separate it out? Or is it arguable that it would be included in the daily rate versus it would, it would all come out in the wash? In other words, like, would, because there's certain times of the year that we don't have late buses.
Right, we only have late buses for, um, about hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty days a year.
Right.
Um, for just like the, the K eights. They, they'll put a bid in that covers that cost. It, it does cost the vendor extra, so whatever they, whatever it costs, they'll project that and they'll put it on the daily bus rate, whatever that looks like. Either way, it's going to come out in the wash, I would think.
By having it shown separately, if we decided to cut anything back, it's a pretty clear number.
Yes.
That's where the question mark is, right? If you need to, you know, have a budget cut or whatever, which we did a few years ago, we know what that number is.
I think it makes sense to put it separate personally.
So can I ask that we look at twenty-two? Because, like, once again, if we're paying for eighteen buses for the elementary level, and fourteen, why are we not including those extra four at the middle school? Because right now, it actually says that it's eighteen for fourteen, um, for the Ber- the Somerset Berkeley District and also public schools.
That's just for information for a vendor that isn't familiar with our existing tier setup. It, it doesn't necessarily mean it has to stay this way.
Okay, so this is what the current practice, but it doesn't mean later on, we need to talk about this?
Yes.
All right, Lindsay, one more question in regards to the discussion about the forty-five minutes to sixty minutes. If we were to keep it at the forty-five minutes, and I understand the logistics of forty-five minutes versus sixty is difficult. And I also understand the Berkeley situation. But specific to Somerset, if we were to mandate forty-five minutes for, say, Somerset Public Schools, could that possibly increase the number of buses that are necessary, which we drive across?
It could potentially, and if we have a, an increase, um, in enrollment and we have increased, you know, locations of students, um, it's hard to say. You know, it's, if we have, if we eliminate double runs at the elementary, currently three or four, if we eliminate those, those, those students are gonna be on the bus longer. So you're combining two routes into one. It's gonna be a long, a longer route.
So it could potentially add another loss?
Yes. Unless we implement bus stops.
If we do the sixty minutes, I, I'm just looking at it as, I'm fine with it, but every bus should be on the road for at least fifty minutes where we could potentially lose, remove some buses. Because to me, saying that we can go to sixty, and I understand, you know, obviously the situation where we're going from Somerset to Berkeley dropping off students, I understand that. And that was something that we always understood during even the regionalization talk. It was discussed multiple times. Thank God that the Berkeley Bridge is open. I think it may save some time. But, um, what I'm looking at it as, if we're opening that language to sixty minutes, part of the transition, I mean, the transportation committee, we really need to look at that for all schools. Because at that point, why not possibly absorb having a few, as long, and I'm not looking to put seventy kids on the bus, but if we can fit fifty or forty-five kids on a bus or even fifty kids on the bus, because it's gonna be sixty minutes, but we're within the sixty minutes, then we really need to look at that. But that would be more of a transportation, uh, subcommittee that we'll bring to you as a...
But sixty minutes is the current language is today, correct?
Forty-five.
It is forty-five?
So obviously, there's something like, because they probably can't meet the forty-five.
We're already violating it in Berkeley anyway.
Yeah, so if...
I thought it was sixty, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Um, Mrs. Albanas, should we add a sentence to make sure that people understand that if there was like a complaint about weather, that it might exceed the forty-five or the sixty, whatever we agree on? Because it doesn't say that and we all know...
I would, I would hope that parents understand that, but I can add a sentence.
Just to add a coverage if someone might take that little...
Sure, yep, no problem.
So the, the only thing that we haven't really, we've said we wouldn't agree to is allowing children of bus drivers on bus cars.
So the motion would be that one seven being stayed?
Right. Although we did also say that we wanted, uh, to modify one twenty one to provide that we'd get alternate proposals.
Right, okay. I can make a motion that, let's try, anyway, to, uh, make a motion that we accept the changes to the R F P, Invitation for Bids, oh, sorry, I F P, as proposed with the exception of the proposed change on one point one seven. And to also on page five for one point two one, allow for, um, the two options of bids where the district takes responsibility for the video cameras and another option where the contractor would take responsibility for the video cameras.
But the districts are okay, I'm sorry, forget that, okay, sorry.
And then we'll review what, how those come back afterwards.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
I'd like to make a motion on the K eight side to accept the R F P as written, except for the following decline, one point one four, uh, one seven change, and to have the option for multiple bids, uh, one for district-owned video and recording and ownership, I should just say, or vendor-owned, uh, in section one point two one.
We have a motion by Mrs. Machado, accepted by Mr. Cook. Any further discussion? Without discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed in unanimous.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the joint open session minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved?
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti and seconded by Mrs. Field. Mrs. Field and seconded by Mr. Larabee. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
I'll, I'll, I have to abstain.
Six votes in the affirmative and Mrs. Gag- pardon me, Mrs. Gagliotti abstains.
Um, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of the joint open session minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved?
Second. Um, we have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mrs. Patel. Any further discussion? Without discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
I will entertain a motion to approve the joint executive session minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved?
Motion made by Mr. Larabee and seconded by Mrs. Field. Any discussion? In the absence of discussion, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? In unanimous.
Oh, no, I abstain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Gagliotti abstains, six in the affirmative.
Um, I'd like to entertain a motion for the K eight for the approval of the joint executive session minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved?
Second.
Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Cook and a second by Mrs. Rothwell. Any discussion? Without any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed?
Is there any public input?
I just had a quick question for Mrs. Albanas.
Sure.
Um, I know one of the, uh, questions about the new schedule at the middle school, they're looking at potentially early morning pickup for music students. I was...
Not for the buses. The buses wouldn't be picking those students up early.
That's not what the principal of the middle school has stated. So I wasn't sure if that was part of the R F P.
No, it's not.
Okay. I think the new schedule needs to be looked at.
And for the public input, um, I know there's not other matters here. Does any committee members have any other matters they would like to bring up for the next meeting? Um, I would like to bring up that it was brought to our attention for the amended agenda for the non-aligned employees for us to add the titles for the, um, discussion that we, um, were going to be discussing. I'd also like for the next meeting, if we could have all the determinations of any kind of new meeting laws that were violated in the last X amount of years to be sent to the committee so we all can kind of keep each other in check to make sure that we're all following the guidelines. And I guess, from what I understand, that we probably should, our new members, receive that information. So if we could get that to the committee over time, that would be great. Thank you.
All right, so we are going to continue our meeting as soon as the K eight school committee adjourns.
I'll do that right now. Um, we have a motion to adjourn the K eight meeting.
So moved? Second.
Uh, we have a motion, Mr. Cook and a second by Mr. Patel. Any discussion? Without discussion by Will Cogell, Mrs. Rothwell.
Aye.
Mr. Patel?
Aye.
Mr. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
So, um, I would like to continue our meeting if we can because we have some people who have been waiting a long time and I feel very glad they got it, but... Committee meeting, here's a report from our student representative, Ryan Silverman. Thank you, Ryan, for being here and waiting, but we'll throw it to hearing. Report.
Hello, I'm Ryan Silverman again. So there's a lot going on in the school in the upcoming weeks. DECA has their district's competition on Wednesday and a very large portion of our students are in that club and we wish them the best of luck. Winter sports and musical rehearsal, which this year the producers are kicking off with the new year. And as for student council, um, before break, we sold candy grams and we were able to raise one hundred dollars and that went to families, local families in need. And the survey topic that the student council picks for their first, um, survey to send to students is on mid-years as there will be mid-years this month.
There's also a presentation to all students on the eighth, I believe, right?
Right, Tuesday.
So that will be, that will be interesting. So, that will be, that will be interesting. I, uh, I'm not sure if the committees, uh, we, we have had some communication from the superintendent about that, that presentation, both to the faculty and to the students. I'm intending to attend both of those, just sit in the back of the room and listen. But, uh, I encourage anyone else that might be interested in attending, I think it's a very important issue, so. All right, so, next item, um, I'd, I'd hope that the superintendent would be here tonight to introduce to us a new member of the high school faculty, Ryan Robidoux, but unfortunately, he's not, he's feeling ill this evening, so, um, Ryan is here. We really appreciate your waiting. Uh, we didn't anticipate that our joint meeting with the Somerset K eight school committee would last as long as it did, but we had issues we needed to cover. But I'm really looking forward to hearing, uh, your presentation, because I think it's a pretty exciting development for our curriculum. So, uh, Ryan, perhaps you could tell us a little bit about your background, and then, uh,
Sure.
as the agenda says, uh, the computer science vision.
Yeah, sure, so, um, my name's Ryan Robidoux. I've been a CS educator for about ten years now. I taught at Old Colony, a vocational school for six years. Uh, prior to that, I taught at, um, UMass Dartmouth and was a research associate, um, for three or four years there. Um, so my background's focused on computer science, it's focused on education. Uh, I slowly transitioned from a software developer when I was in college to more and more working with a math ed research group, um, and got more and more focused on the education piece. So, I was in a PhD program, and then I started teaching and realized that teaching computer science was a lot more fun. So, I quit, and then I skipped out. So that's pretty much all you probably need. Um, so my plan for this, um, when Mr. Schoonover asked me to do it, was kind of reflect on where we're, where we're going. A lot of my thoughts were jotted down about fifteen minutes after my interview with, uh, Ms. Lozinski last spring. But, um, it was nice to kind of get it together, cause one of the things that we want to realize in this district, and really anywhere, is that everything we do is based on computer science. Everything is with computer science, you know, everyone has, quick show of hands, how many people have something in their pocket right now that you can talk to, and it will actually find things on the internet for you. Every phone does that now. So, from home, you know, smart home things to, you know, it's in all of our surgery rooms, it's in hospitals, it's in the banks, it controls everything that we do. Um, this one's actually interesting, so this is a, a contact lens that actually changes a pigment of red when your insulin is low. So instead of having to check your sugars, it'll just use it in the, um, contact lens. So it's literally just all over yourself. And I put my wife on this one, she likes Taylor Swift, so, um, my new favorite application for artificial intelligence is that this summer at Taylor Swift's concert, she had displays set up, um, where, you know, just the normal displays to see her, you know, dancing around and whatnot. But there was cameras at the top that was recording everyone's face. And what it was doing, it was using facial recognition to automatically scan to see if any of her known stalkers were at the concert. Yeah, so it's all these creative solutions that are now possible by the more computer science things that we have. So, for my, my vision, and I think, and I've talked with a, a few people around here, as Tassle talked about it before, um, we're really looking at something, computer science for all, but we also have career pathways. So, the goal is that everyone needs to understand how these things work and how it affects your life. But you don't necessarily have to be a computer scientist, you know, you just have to, this is just knowledge for all citizens. But at the same time, we want to offer pathways to people that do want to have a career in computer science. So we're on the same page, uh, cause computer science is, is many things to many people. But the, the vision that we have in the computer science ed view of computer science, it's, you know, it's a study of ideas, thinking, languages, software, hardware needed to, and this is the big one right here, it's needed to solve problems. So, computer science solves problems. It's not sitting behind a machine and just programming to program. We program these things, we build these things to solve problems. And it doesn't have to be that role of software development. It can be a policy thing, it can be, uh, one of the large issues in artificial intelligence now is that the data's, the data that we're using is based on biased information. If you have biased data, you have biased results, and it ends up causing a lot of, um, issues. So, the plan here is that two, that two-piece, computer science for all, and then also offering career paths for students. So, by providing the knowledge and skills of a baseline of computer science, what's the role locally and globally that computer science has in our lives? Being able to design solutions, software solutions that solve problems in our community, in the world, um, using it just as creative expression. I mean, it's just like in art class, you can make a mobile app, you can make, um, a scratch animation, just as you could make a drawing or make a picture. You just have more ability to use expressive, um, to express yourself. And also basic programming skills. Everyone should have a basic knowledge of how to, you know, make an algorithm do something, whether it's to move a little cat across the screen, or, um, now they have a language where you can actually program blocks that will make a three D drawing that you can then send to a three D printer. Um, it's all fairly simple. And on top of that, the students that do want to have career pathways in computer science, we want to offer them diverse course offerings that follow industry standards, practices, and also our authentic problem-solving environments. We don't want kids to take these courses and sit there and program these things that, you know, you can read in a list of strings and spit out how many letters there are. We'd rather be able to read encrypted information and then figure out how to decrypt it, um, using that. One of the big, um, thoughts is that we have this tech industry that's teeming for, for computer scientists, and it's focused in California, when in reality, literally everyone is looking for people with computer science skills. Um, in twenty seventeen, I think it was in February, um, Dombrowski, the president of the Red Sox, had posted a job posting for a computer scientist to do pitching stats analysis. Um, we have Abercrombie and Finch looking for people that can search through big data. These are all skills for computer science, because computer science actually is that mythical twenty-first century skill. We hear that students need to have these twenty-first century skills, it's computer science. It's the biggest piece of those twenty-first century skills. Um, in surveys in Massachusetts, um, seventy percent of our principals in this state view that it's just as important as our other core academics, like science and mathematics. Um, and, you know, the late Steve Jobs also frequently commented that mastery at some level should be for everyone in the society. So, what we have now, I say all these grand things, I've been here four months, we have one course that I teach, um, that's required by all freshmen at this point. And so far, it's going pretty well. Uh, it's an intro class that touches upon everything I just said there, um, so that we can, by the end of four years, everyone in the school have this base understanding of what computer sciences are and how it affects them. At the same time, we also, for the next year, uh, Mr. Adams and I, uh, he's the content coordinator for the engineering technology department, have proposed these other three courses. One is a website course to make professional websites. Um, this AP mobile system, it's a, it's an AP course for computer science that uses, uh, mobile apps. So you use this free software called App Inventor, and you make mobile apps that are useful in the community, um, and it's an AP-level course. And then finally, uh, introduction to Python, it's a popular programming language, we can insert that to be any language you want. But right now, Python is a, um, a pretty, a pretty apt language. The goal for all of these, and what I've built into this one already, is that there's these embedded practices that we want students to have, which are also these twenty-first century skills. So, it's an iterative design process where students are giving, giving me projects, they're getting feedback and able to make changes to them, just like anywhere else in engineering. Um, we maintain an online portfolio that, so that they can be more accountable for what their learning is. And finally, this last one, I only started to use this idea of skill up in the last couple of months, cause when I was at a couple of conferences in the fall, everyone kept talking about the idea of skill up. And all of the, um, these industry people that are at these conferences talking, students and employees need to be able to skill up. The idea is they want people, while you're working on a project, you're going to encounter something that you're gonna need to learn how to do. I don't know what Ryan's job's gonna look like in ten years, but I'll tell you, it's gonna be skills that I don't have, and I don't know, and he doesn't know. So we have to have students have the ability, while you're solving a problem, you're gonna reach something that you're not gonna know how to do, and you have to have the foresight and the ingenuity to go out, figure out where to find it, and how to get help, and how to get those skills while you're working on the problem. Um, and that's a perfect thing in computer science, you don't know everything right off the bat, and a lot of it is learning on your own and taking that second step. But while we want CS for all, we can't ignore the fact that the job market for computer science is huge. You know, at the country level, sixteen percent of new wages come from the computing industry. And in Massachusetts, it's even, um, higher, we have sixteen, almost seventeen thousand open jobs in computing in Massachusetts. We graduate less than two thousand CS grads. Um, its growth is two point seven percent higher than any other job. That's actually not a Massachusetts, like, yay Massachusetts, everyone, it's two point seven percent. Um, some states is upwards to three, four percent higher than others. Um, and if you want to entice people, I mean, you look at just salaries. It's almost double the average salary if you're getting into computing field. As I was telling Ryan outside, if you're interested in machine learning, which is the ability to, basically, that's how Alexa works, um, it's be able to mine all this data to make predictions. Um, the average salary is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, they don't have enough people, which is where we go. So, these are proposed things that have been in discussions, um, but we haven't done them yet, cause we've only had a half, you know, one semester of school so far. But the goal would be to offer things, we already have a robotics program that's thriving. Um, I know Mr. Crook's leaving in three weeks, but hopefully that's not going away, and we'll still have the ability to do robotics. Um, cybersecurity was something that was put into a, um, a grant that came by a couple of months ago. Um, and then there's also another version of the AP computer science test, which is more focused on, um, technical programming skills. And then, these other three are just fun stuff that I've done before. So the ability to have courses where you can make interactive, data-driven, um, web apps, where you can use databases, you know, learning how to, um, make software based on the project. So not learning about Python, but learning how to create whatever software you need for whatever the problem's gonna be. And then finally, eventually, maybe we can get to things like special topics. Um, I know a lot of the engineering technology courses have, you know, level one, level two, level three, where we can tackle some of these problems, if you've taken a couple of years of computer science, we can tackle these things and do, um, machine learning or databases, um, in the past. Right now, fifty percent of high schools teach computer science in Massachusetts. That's actually lower than when I went to school in the late nineties.
Wow.
Um, with the dot-com bust in two thousand, computer science education also took a, took a dip. Um, so, we have a unique opportunity, um, this isn't about me, but I showed this picture. I went to the, this is the National Computer Science Teachers Association. Picture NCTM, which is the big math one, but for computer science teachers. There was just about seven hundred people. I went to the New England Conference in October, there was less than one hundred. There's not a lot of us right now. Um, there's not a lot of people that are doing this, um, and we have a unique opportunity to be a model for how this can work. We just went through and got a mayor, uh, that should be governor, not mayor, but the governor of Massachusetts gave us a citation for, uh, STEM Week that we did in October, which all the programs in the engineering technology participated in. Um, we each had a day of having displays. We already have leaders in professional groups, I'm in the CSTA, I was, I had an award from them last year. Uh, Mr. Schoonover and I are both part of the STEM Network Advisory Board for Southeastern Massachusetts. And we have a unique opportunity, that we have a lot of industry partnerships. We have a lot of people in the town and in Berkeley and, um, and Somerset that have interest in our, in our work in these industries, to create partnerships where we can have guest speakers come in. Mr. Crook's done a great job of bringing in, um, a gentleman, Mr. Shaker from Symantec, which is the people who do Norton antivirus, he comes in every year and speaks to the people, he's a fantastic speaker. Uh, we can also have the chance to have these authentic projects, um, where, I was at, as I said, the New England Conference, where up in Braintree, they don't have internships or opportunities for students to go out and work, um, in the field. If you're gonna work for a defense contractor, you need like security clearance and a lot, a lot of hurdles. But what they were able to do is bring in these people from industry to the school, bring the projects in that students could work on, and act as mentors. So, it's just being slightly, uh, creative. We already have this idea of capstone projects, um, you know, starting to brew in the English department at Somerset Berkeley, so. Um, and then, vertical alignment, K to twelve of the standards, I mean, that's not even on many radars in Massachusetts. The frameworks are only two years old, um, and we don't necessarily have a plan for that, that anyone has done. So, to be a community that takes on some of these things over the next few years, we have an opportunity to, you know, really make a, make a stand and be a model for what other people might want to do.
So, I just have, this is fantastic, I, I get so excited about this. So the plan right now is that our freshmen are exposed to this.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, we can build on that with the various classes that you're proposing. You'll talk to Liz, obviously, the administration, to do that. So right now, um, freshmen are getting it for half a year?
Yeah, right now, it's a half-year course.
Yep.
So they're, the freshmen are flip-flopping with the health curriculum.
Okay.
Um, so, it was, we only have, I think I have five classes left with pretty much everybody right now. It is definitely packed in there, I'm used to having kids for six and a half hours a day, two weeks a month. So it was definitely a challenge to kind of put together something, and, you know, it is an iterative design, so next semester's gonna be, you know, a, a little bit different. But, we have right now, Mr. Adams has just put out those three courses that I mentioned back here, um, the professional websites, the AP CSP, and the intro Python. So those are courses that are gonna be on the books that hopefully people will want to take. Um, next year, I do have students already interested in taking, um, some of these courses. These right here are not, you don't need to have any background knowledge in computer science, these are intro courses. The AP course you can take as a freshman, it's not a huge learning curve. Um, it's based on App Inventor, which is block, if anyone's familiar with scratch programming, it's these blocks-based programming, but it has some really powerful things that you can do with it. It has, uh, voice recognition, it has, uh, translation things into it. So, really, any kind of problem that you want to address, um, you could feasibly build a solution, you know, in, within the level of this course, or even in, in a week or two.
Anything else?
Paul, I can say that as a student who is interested in computer science, you know, I had to take all of my courses on VHS, it's really great to see that our schools now, as a teacher, who can give the students hands-on experience.
Yeah, very exciting, very exciting, glad that you're on board.
Me too.
Yeah, I, I just want to say, this is something that we've been discussing for some time, and really anxious to get this into our curriculum. And we actually, um, created a position a year ago, and unfortunately, we weren't able to fill it, but I, we're very fortunate to have you, uh, fill, fill the spot, and are really excited, and I just want you to know that, uh, I think I can speak for the committee in saying we wholeheartedly support, um, this, uh, program, and really want to see it developed, because we recognize, as, as you said, I was at the state, uh, conference, school annual state conference of school committees, and we had a speaker who said something to the effect that eighty percent of the jobs that will exist, uh, in the next decade or two, don't exist at the present time. And so, uh, we have to prepare our students to be, be ready to take on those kinds of challenges of, of dealing with a workplace that is going to be incredibly fast-evolving, and, uh, we want, need to, need to be prepared, and this is, uh, we need to make room for this. We have to shuffle things around, we need, we need to make room for this in our curriculum, and the related, the related programs like robotics that go along with it, so.
Yeah, I told, I told the freshmen all the time, this intro course, you know, I do a unit on cybersecurity and artificial intelligence. Four years ago, I would never have done that in a intro course, or, you know, maybe a senior-level course, but it's literally everywhere, you know, we have all these applications of AI and cybersecurity that we just need to be aware of. They control, um, our news feeds, and we have to understand how that's happening, and how it can affect us, and how we can understand maybe how we're being gamed at certain points.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Things are evolving so, so fast. I was, there was an article in Consumer Reports this month about, uh, phones, and I believe that it said, uh, that the iPhone was only introduced in about two thousand seven. So that's just eleven years ago.
The iPad was only two thousand nine.
It's incredible what you're carrying around in your pocket, and what it has the capability of doing, and it's only gonna. And it's only gonna get, it's only gonna progress exponentially and uh, so it's great to have you aboard.
We're really fortunate to have somebody who has such vision. So the anticipation of, of all of these things that you see, there are things that are not even, that didn't make the presentation that we've already had conversations about. So it's a really great benefit for us in so many ways. We're, we're very... So everything happens for a reason. It was a year delay, but thi- this is, this is what we got.
Okay, so uh, I wanted to get through these presentations. Does anybody wanna take a, a brief break before we finish up our agenda?
Okay.
So we'll just take a very brief break. The next item under Budget and Financial Matters is to approve monthly invoices. Uh, does anyone have any questions about the monthly invoices? If not, then please sign the warrants before leaving the meeting tonight. Under New Business, we have Superintendent Evaluation. Unfortunately, because Mr. Schoonover is not here, uh, we won't be able to have his presentation. We'll defer that to our next meeting. So the second item of New Business is Capital Plan Update. Mrs. Alvernas?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Pierce. So um, I have been working on a facility maintenance plan for this building. I started in around the September, October timeline. And um, we've had a few facility maintenance um, supplementary meetings, which um, Mr., Mr. Field, Mrs. Field. And um, she's attended both of them and Mr. Pierce attended one. Our last one was um, on December seventeenth. So at that meeting, the intention of the facility maintenance plan is to have a live document that we utilize and update on a timely basis to identify the, the maintenance that goes along with this building. I mean, I think we've all said that we don't want it to go by the wayside. We wanna put the resources into actually being proactive with maintaining a new building. So what this plan is, is that it lays out uh, seven different sections um, by asset. And I will say, we did make some, some revisions at the December seventeenth uh, meeting that have not been implemented on this yet. I just haven't had time to do it. I hope to do it last week, but I got sidetracked doing something else. Um, so I, I do, I, with the meeting that you two were at, I will be making those revisions shortly. So basically, the plan breaks it down by seven sections. My type of asset, um, which is on the table of contents. You can kind of see that outline uh, page two through page five. Then page six really talks about the intents and purposes of, of this plan. And then on page eight is really uh, what we think or are estimating the major assets that need to be maintained or replaced over a window of fifty years. I used two thousand fourteen as year one only because that's when the building was open to faculty and students. Um, obviously, it was existing before then. It just wasn't, you know, the doors weren't open at that point. Um, so you can see on this grid is basically a, a snapshot of what the assets that are listed in each of those sections, uh, what the life, lifetime of those assets are and the estimated cost. Obviously, they're estimates. There's no way for sure for us to know that, you know, it's gonna be this cost, you know, in twenty years. But uh, we wanted to put that in there just so that, you know, when the facilities manager, you know, Mr. Campos is going to retire at some point, so he's not gonna be here for the next four years. Um, and, you know, someone's actually watching this, as well as the business manager who has to budget for these, these larger assets. Um, it's important that both of those, both of those um, employees are cognizant and not reviewing this document. So page nine is really um, just what we're currently doing. There is a line in here that's highlighted. I'm sorry, I should have printed, I should have put it in gray. But um, it is exactly what we're doing now on an annual basis and it's something that, I think that the community needs to know about because it's not, we're not just fixing things as they break, which do happen at, you know, those do happen um, at some point throughout the year, but we are doing a lot of preventative maintenance. And um, and I, I think that, you know, I think we do a good job of that. So I just wanted to list that too. And then I'm not gonna bore with the details, but if you just wanna take a look at all the sections, kind of breaks it out, breaks out, you know, it has some pictures. I didn't, we had a nice time on the roof, you know, a month ago. It was a nice day. All the pictures were done with my phone, so kinda tying into Mr. Robyn's presentation. It, it's basically just laying out what, what is being done, preventative maintenance that's being done, lifetime of assets, um, what should be done in between those lifetime, you know, lifetime assets, like for example, um, the roof. So we currently do not have a vendor that comes out and reviews the conditions of the roof. It is something that we need to and have included in next year's budget as far as having um, someone come out that's qualified, looking for cracks, looking for leaks, looking um, infrared to just see if there's any moisture building up and where that is, so we can kind of adapt and fix it, you know, as it comes up. So those are the types of things that we weren't doing before. We were just waiting for the ceiling to leak and then fix it. So um, that's just, that's just one of them. So um, like I said, this is a work in progress, but I wanted to show you what we had done so far. And um, I hope it's, it's to the committee's pleasure. Um, but it is something that, even though it's dated here, it's gonna be something that is updated annually.
Anything I could add to that? So um, as a sitting member of the Building Committee for the high school, um, and also just, just to make a note, Rich Bentzremaker, who was chair of our Building Committee, um, also sits in on these meetings regarding the development of the maintenance plan. It was the intent of the Building Committee to make sure that we had a maintenance plan for this building. We heard from the community loud and clear that we knew it was a large investment and we wanted to make sure that we were going to maintain that investment. So the purpose of this document, as Lindsay said, it's a living document. It will evolve as we work further on it. But it really is also to serve as a guiding document as well, meaning there are going to be um, large investments down the road to make sure that we're maintaining this building. And this document will also help guide the Budget Subcommittee as to what might be coming up in future years so that we can plan accordingly, whether it's working on updating the track, whether there's field work that needs to be done, whether there's a major piece of equipment that has to be replaced so that the town can have reassurance that there's a document in place at any time that has the transparency around what this is. So as Lindsay said, it doesn't seem that we're being very reactive, but there's actually a plan in place on when we can expect to make these um, updates.
Just a question as I'm looking at page eight. Um, under year ten, we're projecting a football turf replacement as well as um, maintenance on the track. But I don't see anything football turf-related after year ten. I might have surmised that...
Oh, that's a good catch. We should probably be looking at that every ten years, so thank you for that.
Same question with the closet servers. Um, that's listed as year ten, but never again.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Um, under section three, MDF slash IDF closet servers?
Yes.
And then performing arts. So I don't, I don't know if, if we've had a chance to take a look at this grid just to make sure that there's not items that need to be, you know, repeated um, cause that'll obviously have a fiscal year total cost impact. And it'll drive up the overall cost of the plan over the bottom line.
Thank you.
While the numbers are daunting, I think to a certain degree provides, um, I don't wanna use the word peace of mind, but it's good to have a place where all of this resides, that we can refer to as we're building budgets and looking down the line to what we need to prepare for. Thank you.
Yes, I think, I think it's, it's important that not only do we recognize that these uh, these items are going to be needed, needed to be addressed uh, in this timeframe, but also we have to plan fiscally as to how we're gonna address them. And it's, I know that's a very difficult thing to do, particularly in this very difficult budget time. But not, not acknowledging that we have these maintenance responsibilities for this facility and not planning for it, not only from a maintenance point of view, but also from a fiscal, fiscal standpoint, is not responsible. So we'll have, we have to think about that as part of it. We have to think about reserving for these anticipated expenditures as we plan annual budgets going forward. We, we present, we present the, the plan to uh, the taxpayers or the voters. And if they decide that uh, they don't wanna address it at this time, that's their decision. But we've presented it and uh, shown the plan that we have uh, to properly maintain this facility. And hopefully, they'll support it. They don't, uh, we'll, we'll move forward. But uh, we, we, we need to make them aware of, of the fact that there are expenses in maintaining a facility like this. And we wanna be responsible in terms of planning for it going forward. Does anyone else have anything else like to add?
Is the uh, the, cause you said this is a living, breathing document. So if the committee had suggestions or things that we see, should we just...
Absolutely.
You know, it's just like, I, I don't see pavement and, you know, parking lots.
That came up, that came up at our Subcommittee meeting. I noted that myself.
There's some things that we just didn't think about.
I mean, you could get down to the new chair, but...
Well, we should get down to uh, you know, we don't, we don't need to uh, be concerned about including hundred-dollar or maybe even a thousand-dollar items. They go on the annual maintenance list. But uh, we need, we need to be comprehensive, keep you comprehensive. And certainly, maintaining uh, drainage and uh, paved surfaces is, is an expense. The, the weather creates wear and tear. There's nothing we can do about that.
Thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for doing this, though. Thank you. We talked about this at our retreat and this is phenomenal. Thank you for all of your work, Lindsay.
Thank you.
So um, I think the plan will be to finalize it. Can I have some feedback? And then, so if you do have feedback, please feel free to email me. I'm hoping to get this finished within the end of the month or by the end of the month. And um, then we can kind of, not necessarily vote on it, but just have it as this is what we're gonna be using.
I think it also may make not only the, not only the community at large, but also our Somerset, Berkeley regional high school community aware of the kind of investment that the community has in this facility and the responsibility that we all have to respect it and take good care of it.
Mrs. Alvernas, I have a question.
Sure.
The closet servers, does that include the Citrix servers that the students have?
No.
No, it's, it's separate.
That's separate, okay.
I will add that, though. Thank you.
Cause I was just thinking that with Chromebooks now, I'm not sure how useful the Citrix database is.
Yeah.
So I'm like, if it was included, I was maybe questioning if it maybe shouldn't be maintained because there's no, it's sort of redundant with Chromebooks now.
And I think it's carried in Steve's budget, so I think it's outside of, I think, when I say budget, but I, but Steve's, yeah, I think it, it's under Steve's maintenance, but you might wanna just check with him and see how that's categorized.
Thank you for the feedback.
All right, so we'll move on now to other matters. Um, and before we have uh, reports from the school districts, um, I wanted to put on the agenda uh, the, the discussion of, of live school committee meetings uh, being televised on Somerset Access Television. The reason that I put this on the agenda is because um, the Somerset K eight School Committee recently voted to um, have their school committees, their school committee meetings broadcast live. And I think they, they took some steps to equip their meeting room with whatever hardware was necessary in order to do that. And um, I was, I was told by Mrs. Tara that Mrs. Rothwell was particularly concerned that our committee be made aware that the Somerset K eight Committee was going to be broadcasting meetings live. Um, and Mrs. Tara did in fact contact me and pass that information along. And I said I would put it on the agenda of um, our committee so that we could discuss whether uh, we were interested in broadcasting our meetings live. I'm not, I'm not privy to um, the discussion that actually occurred uh, at the K eight School Committee about uh, what brought live broadcast of their meetings. I know our Somerset Board of Selectmen have had live broadcast of their meetings for some time. They used cable, um, part of the money that comes from uh, the cable contract to install the equipment that was necessary for them to broadcast their meetings live from the library. We, uh, in discussions uh, with Mr. Leveque, we actually have the capacity um, here at the high school to broadcast our meetings live without any additional, um, the, the, any additional expense in terms of installing equipment. However, uh, in order to do it, it would require uh, some additional personnel. I am told, in addition to our very capable camera person, we would have to have someone in the control room in the TV studio uh, to, I guess, engineer the broadcast. Uh, I personally do not see a, a real need for us to broadcast our meetings live. They're, they appear on Access Television uh, pretty quickly after. And the other concern that I have is that they, they would be broadcast live in Somerset, but they would not be broadcast live in Berkeley. So I welcome any discussion on the issue. Maybe, maybe, maybe uh, our Somerset K eight School Committee representatives could tell us why uh, why this K eight School Committee decided to incur the cost of being able to broadcast their meetings live. What were the compelling interests that...
Well, it was, it was brought to the committee that there has been an outreach of uh, people from the community that would like to see live broadcasts. I found it hard to believe that that's what they were told. Um, the, the, the cost was proposed to us that was going to be less than a thousand dollars, more around the six hundred dollar range that it would cost the district. So it was a nominal fee. Um, and it has been a discussion at times for maybe if there's inclement weather or the elderly that, you know, maybe haven't seen it on, you know, Access TV that would like to watch it live, that this would give them the opportunity. So um, that was how it was proposed to us. And because the, the fee was uh, you know, pretty reasonable, we, we went ahead and said we, we would move forward on it. So we did vote. Since then, I mean, it would be interesting for us to e- explore if the cable company could also help supplement that cost even, even though it is, you know, less than a thousand dollars. But any few dollars we can save would be good for there. So at our next meeting, I plan to bring that up to see if we've explored that option as, as well. I brought it up that I just wanted to make sure that as a partner with Somerset, Berkeley, that you guys were aware of what we were doing and, and uh, didn't, you know, just wanted to be transparent, that's all.
We are receiving, uh, we are receiving some funding under the cable contract at the present time from Somerset. We're not receiving any funding uh, from Berkeley because their, their contract had been recently renewed and didn't provide very significant compensation for educational components. The funding that we receive supports uh, the TV studio and the program for students primarily in terms of the educational opportunities involved at the TV studio. in terms of the educational opportunities involved at the TV studio. I really don't know, we don't, we don't have any specific proposal as to what, what it might cost to, for, for the additional staffing that would be necessary. I'm, I'm interested, do you, does, does your broadcast involve only the camera person?
That was how it was proposed to us. So, yeah, after the discussion, there's been, you know, further things that have been brought up that we need to clarify, such as if the cable company could help us supplement and also if it is just the one camera person or if there is somebody in the broadcast group that needs to be hired as well, because if there is a labor expense, then that would add to it. So we need to get a full scope. So at our next meeting, I plan to bring that back up again.
Yeah, if we were going to consider this, you know, as a, as a, one of the members from Berkeley, it would be important that there was parity as far as who could watch the broadcast, so.
Yeah.
I think it's critical if we're going to have a conversation about this that we get the necessary feedback and the necessary input from folks in Berkeley as to how we would be able to broadcast live there as well.
I mean, I look at it as our meetings are, are open to the public. They're televised on SATV and in Berkeley. They're well covered in the spectator. Thank you, George. I, I, I think I'd rather spend just personally our committee's time working on other initiatives. I don't, especially given that we can't do it as easily in Berkeley. I think we need to spend our time and money on other things.
Okay, well, I wanted to, and it can be an ongoing discussion too, so if we see, we can see how it works out with the K eight district and how.
Can we give feedback on how successful we're?
We'll have to survey viewership.
Yeah. It would be interesting to know that, wouldn't it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, so we'll defer any further discussion on that and if anyone would like to discuss it more in the future, just let, let us know. So is there anything to report from the Somerset K eight district this time?
I don't think we've had a meeting since our last meeting.
Right, we have, we have a meeting scheduled on the fourteenth.
Okay. Mr. Giliducci, do you want to?
Happy New Year. It's already the third. We, we have our first meeting coming up on, on the fourteenth, so that at the next meeting, we'll be able to report.
All right, so under approval of minutes, I'll entertain a motion. Well, let me, let me first say there were a couple of editorial changes to the minutes of the open session, which I discussed with Robin this afternoon. If they weren't anything substantive, I'm not sure. Are they revised minutes in the packet?
No.
Oh, you haven't. Okay. So on the open meeting minutes, on the first page in the first section, there was a change of the word ration to ratio. Then on the third page, six, six lines down, students falling through the cracks. At the bottom of the page, Mr. Pierce abstained as he had recused himself from executive session. And then on the fourth page, the second paragraph, Mr. Pierce said there was not a need to discuss security. Those were the, just the editorial changes, so I entertain a motion to approve those minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Mrs. Gagliotti, seconded by Ms. Larrabee, and then Mr. Giliducci. Any discussion?
No.
Any absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December sixth, two thousand eighteen.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Larrabee, seconded by Mrs. Gagliotti. Any discussion? Any absence of discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Next, there are topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Are there any action items for future meetings? If there are none, is there public input?
One little idea. Excellent report here on maintenance, but when it comes to electrical panels, that was my racket. It says lifetime is approximately thirty years, placement cost, placement should be researched. I'd like to have you add the two words inspections yearly for the panels. I used to tell my men when they walked into a substation, you'd open the door, you'd step in and you'd stop and you'd look and you'd listen and you'd smell when you're inside of a substation. If anything in that area, I mean, something was wrong. So I think a inspection yearly, I don't know how many panels you have in the building, all the buildings, the size of them, but that, that shouldn't be suspect or subject to an inspection yearly.
Thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, if there is no further public input, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. Field, seconded by Ms. Larrabee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you everyone for coming in.
Thank you.